February tenth, meeting of the Troy Planning Commission. Copies of the agenda for tonight's meeting are available at the entrance to the room. Additionally, the agendas and minutes of prior meetings are available on the city's website. The meeting will be conducted in accordance with the agenda as presented or amended by the Planning Commission. The roles and responsibilities of the Planning Commission are outlined on the reverse side of tonight's agenda. State law establishes planning commissions. The commission is comprised of nine members, all of whom have volunteered to serve. Members are appointed by the mayor and confirmed by the city council. The other individuals seated at the table this evening are representatives of the city's planning department, the city attorney's office, and the city's planning consultant, Carlisle Wortman Associates. If you wish to address the Planning Commission, please come forward when recognized and provide your name and address on the sign-in sheet. Please begin your remarks by stating your name for the benefit of the commissioners. All remarks are to be addressed to the Planning Commission and not to anyone else in the room. At this time, I ask that all cell phones, BlackBerries, PDAs, or any other devices that might disrupt this meeting, please either be placed in silent mode or be turned off. Ms. Darnicky, the roll call, please.
Mr. Appahedian?
Here.
Ms. Cruz?
Here.
Mr. Edmonds?
Here.
Mr. Hudson?
Here.
Mr. Krent?
Here.
Ms. Koopa?
Here.
Mr. Zanzika?
Mr. Stratt?
Here.
Mr. Tagle?
Thank you. We have a quorum present, and I would like, before we begin our next agenda item, I'd like to certainly welcome our two new members, Ms. Padma Koopa, who is an IT engineer out at Chrysler, and Mr. Ali Appahedian, who is a civil engineer and works with the road commission. Welcome to both of you. Number two is the approval of the agenda. May I have a motion to approve the agenda? Mr. Hudson? Seconded by Mr. Stratt.
Ms. Cruz?
Yes.
Mr. Edmonds?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Krent?
Yes.
Ms. Koopa?
Yes.
Mr. Stratt?
Yes.
Mr. Appahedian?
Yes.
Next item is the minutes of the January twenty-seventh, two thousand and fifteen meeting. Could I please have a resolution to approve or amend those minutes as published?
I'll approve it.
Mr. Krent? Support. Ms. Cruz, thank you.
Mr. Edmonds?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Krent?
Yes.
Ms. Koopa?
Yes.
Mr. Stratt?
Yes.
Mr. Appahedian? Yes.
Number four is public comment for items not on the agenda. Seeing no one in the audience who is coming forward, we could move on to number five, preliminary site plan review. File number SP-1002, proposed the Mark of Troy southeast quarter of Maple and Axtel at twenty-seven eighty-five West Maple, section thirty-two. Currently zoned IB, Integrated Industrial and Business District. Mr. Carlisle?
Yes, thank you. I don't think I need to go into too much detail about this project, as this is probably the, I think, the fifth time the Planning Commission's seen it. The two new members of the Planning Commission have reviewed past videos of the project, meetings of the project, so I don't think I need to go into too much detail. I will note that the major discussion at the last meeting was the shift in Axtel Road to line up at Maple. The applicant has since then, has amended all their plan sets so that they all are consistent and show the shift in the road as requested. As a result, they had to make some slight modifications to the site plan. These modifications include shifting a few of the buildings on Maple Road, as well as the buildings on Axtel. All buildings do meet the thirty-foot setback requirements, as noted. The other change as a result of the shifting of the road is the applicant had to remove a row of parking. As a result, they are deficient by two parking spaces on site. The applicant is required to provide four hundred and ninety-six, and they're providing four hundred and ninety-four. As a result, the applicant has to receive a parking deviation from the Planning Commission. This is within the authority the Planning Commission can grant. We find that based on the apartment use of the property and the fact that it's not likely that the apartments either will be leased a hundred percent fully and/or the changing times and the nature of apartment uses, we don't think a parking deviation of two spaces is going to be an issue, and we recommend that the Planning Commission do grant that parking deviation. In addition, the last significant change the Planning Commission has seen from this plan is the applicant did put a small traffic circle in off their entrance off Axtel. It has been reviewed by the engineering department. They do have some concerns about that, and so that will be something that will have to be reviewed as part of the final site plan. The applicant has noted that if necessary, they can easily remove that traffic circle if it's found during the final engineering, that that will not work. Those are the only significant changes to the plans since the last review. Another small change is the applicant has eliminated the gates, entrance gates, that were on Axtel. They have not noted whether or not they're going to put those back in as part of the final site plan, but if they do, that will have to be reviewed by the public safety departments, police, and fire, as well as engineering moving forward. So in conclusion, the applicant has made all the necessary changes that we have recommended. The plan is consistent with what the Planning Commission saw at the last meeting, noted these small changes I noted, and we do recommend preliminary site plan approval with the parking deviation.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Are there any questions for Mr. Carlisle and the Planning Commissioners? Seeing none, is the applicant here, and would you please come forward and sign in, please?
Steven Schaefer, Schaefer Development, Farmington Hills, twenty-nine eight-hundred Middle Belt. Well, Mr. Carlisle outlined the changes that we had to make as a result of a meeting that we had with the road commission. We were able to get Axtel Road lined up, and hopefully at some time in the future, there'll be a traffic signal there. There's some other improvements that need to transpire, but there was a question that was asked at the last meeting about some ins and outs. On the front side elevations, on the second floor, we do have an in and out of the elevation through the middle, so there is some relief through there. But other than that, if there's any other questions? I think Ben mentioned about the parking, although we kind of thought that traffic circle, we're hoping that it'll work out with fire, because we do have an offset between those two parking areas, and it does make a good transition, and it's also a nice traffic calming measure, you know, for us through that section. And it could, you know, also provide for another, hopefully, element that will bring some interest to the entry. But we're very excited. The process has been great. I appreciate all the time that the Planning Commission has spent with us, and staff and everybody has, you know, always been available to answer questions, and we appreciate the good things that you've done to, you know, keep this type of development moving along, so.
Thank you, Mr. Schaefer. Any questions from the Planning Commission for the applicant? Mr. Stratt?
Yeah, I was just, you were unable to actually get the approval from the restaurant to?
Yes, we're in discussion with them. They want to know that it's approved, and then we're going to talk about the relocation of the entrance and what we could do for them. I mean, they do have an entrance by right currently, but I think now that the project is moving forward, that they would have a willingness to work with us to make a little bit safer access. We would prefer to try to get it lined up in here. We did put a row of trees in here that would give us some screening from the parking lot, but we do have the ability to pop it through here and then add a little bit more green in the front for you to adjust that entryway. I think they're rather excited about the prospects of having so many people next door that should be good for business.
A lot of potential customers.
Yes.
Follow-up on it? What about the landscaping on that parcel?
This is actually under the jurisdiction of the city. We'll have to work with staff, but what we would prefer to do is something in a very upright arborvitae that stays green with some type of hedge and maybe some flowers or something that isn't, you know, going to get run over in the landscape area there to create some type of screening, nothing with short vegetation. I think we want to try to have some upright arborvitae's or something like that through there to make a screen wall. We have about twelve to fourteen feet there for planting, so we do have an opportunity to screen that.
Seems to me it would be nice if you could, I'm probably telling you what to do, but it wouldn't be an ideal location to have kind of an umbrella as the entrance into your area.
Yeah.
If you could, rather than upright, if you can get some trees in there, that could actually create like a umbrella.
Yeah, I mean, we'll try to have some, you know, really nice identification here. What we can do, I'm not sure how much we can do on this corner, because we're taking out a little bit more of the property to create for a better, maybe a lot of blocks that are entering in, and...
I was really talking about the actual island there.
Oh.
There, yeah.
Right there.
Yeah, but that's...
I'll have the city let me put a sign.
Well, whatever. Right.
Yeah, there's utilities and things in there as well that we have to deal with.
That's all right. We'll screw them all up. And then let's go down.
Any other questions for Mr. Schaefer? Ms. Cruz?
I'm just curious as to why you made the decision to move the gates.
You know, I think that we'll probably have something in the evenings. I don't really want to have it gated. I went to Regency Park. It's almost like a jail getting out of there. I certainly don't want to have it gated like that, but we do want to have some security in the evening. We weren't really sure of the design. I wanted to make sure that cars could turn around. We did add some access points here, so if the gates are open here and they have to, you know, get out, then they're not backing out. And it took a little bit of thought on that, but I think that's something we definitely like to take a look at with staff, but at this point, we don't know exactly how that should be laid out, and I think we just wanted to wait until we had the ability to do that.
Mr. Krent?
You know, I'm going to follow up on what Mr. Tagle said at our last meeting regarding the different relief of the face of the buildings. How deep are those differences as opposed to just a straight line across the building?
They're, you know, probably four to five feet indentation with some balconies, and there'll be balconies that'll come in and out, and, you know, we really want to focus on some really nice windows, because I think windows are going to make a big difference, especially with this elevation with as much glass as we have. And then also with some of the storage that we've added, it does add a nice element with actual veranda on the second floor for half the units, because we created some storage on the main floor at this point. Then also, during our layout, we did, I believe, pick up six additional indoor spaces in the buildings because of the way we laid out the electrical and the water rooms and the trash compactor. Once we had all the dimensions, we were able to get one more parking space, so we'll work with staff, and we should be okay with the parking. The more covered, obviously, the better, so.
And you will still have the lockers in front of the parking spaces?
We're planning on having storage for individuals. We think it's very important that you can't, you know, you can't logically put it in the unit, so, you know, suitcases, things like that.
Or even a bike?
A bike. I mean, it's a short ride to either Somerset or Birmingham, so.
Further questions? In regard to the gates that Ms. Cruz brought up, I think there is good safety reasons to not have them. I know there's a subdivision right next to us that has been lobbying, you know, to have gates put at theirs, and one of their residents is an MS person, and he was really concerned, and I think perhaps rightfully so, that, you know, if there's an emergency, are you going to hold up an emergency vehicle for getting in there? I know there are probably electronic ways to have that man...
There'll actually be breakaway.
Right.
These'll all be break, if we do that, there'll be breakaway. I mean, someone would be able to get through. We're not going to put gates and prevent entry, but if there was a fire or an emergency, they certainly would be able to get right through there and address that.
Anything else? Staff, any questions? Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And we'll bring it back to the Planning Commission now for a resolution.
Okay. Thank you very much.
May I have a resolution?
I'll move it.
Thank you, Mr. Hudson.
Be it resolved, the Planning Commission hereby approves a reduction in the total number of required parking spaces for the proposed The Mark of Troy apartment complex to four hundred and ninety-four, when a total of four hundred and ninety-six spaces are required on the site based on the off-street parking space requirements for multiple family developments. This two-space reduction is minimal and will still allow the development to meet parking standards as per similar projects developed by the applicant. This reduction meets the standards of thirteen point zero six section, and be it finally resolved, the preliminary site plan approval pursuant to Article Eight of the zoning ordinance is requested for the proposed The Mark of Troy, located in the southeast corner of Maple and Axtel, commonly known as twenty-seven eighty-five West Maple. Section thirty-two within the IB Integrated Industrial and Business District be granted, subject to the following. One, provide planting details for the landscape plan, including bioswales prior to final site plan approval. Two, design of an internal traffic signal, circle, to be approved by engineering prior to final site plan approval.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Stratt. Any further discussion? If not, the roll, oh, I'm sorry. The roll call, please.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Krent?
Yes.
Ms. Koopa?
Yes.
Mr. Stratt?
Yes.
Mr. Appahedian?
Yes.
Ms. Cruz?
Yes.
Mr. Edmonds?
Yes. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Have any idea about when you can complete this, or first unit opening?
Well, I plan on reaching out to staff for an engineering meeting. We have all our schematics done, so we'd like to work with staff as quickly as possible to get engineering drawings in. I think we're in pretty good shape with the road commission, so we'd like to get final drawings in, and, you know, spring, summer would be ideal for us to break ground, and we can do a lot of the construction over the winter that the buildings closed in and push up and have a nice spring opening, so.
Great, thank you very much.
We're very excited about it. Thank you very much.
We are, too. Thank you. Item six is public comment for items on the current agenda. Seeing no one in the audience, we will move on to number seven, Planning Commission comment. This is the point at which Planning Commissioners, if they have items they'd like to talk about, or if you, in the case of the new Planning Commissioners, it would be nice if you'd give us a little bit of background, take a few minutes. So let's begin with Ms. Koopa.
I moved to Troy in nineteen ninety-eight. Actually arrived here in one of the worst snowstorms with a six-month-old and a three-year-old, and I've made Troy my home since. When we came hunting for houses, we chose Troy not only because of the schools, which is, but also because of the Paratyia Temple and the opportunities for jobs in the area, particularly up and down Big Beaver. However, I have saw Chrysler at that time, and I want to set my sights there, and I am there. I've been there for five years continuously. I was there as a contractor earlier. My children were, one of my children graduated from Troy School District International Academy East, and I have a son who is a junior, and I'm active within a couple of nonprofit organizations outside of the community.
Thank you. Mr. Appahedian?
I grew up in Southern California. I went to school in Southern California. I moved to Michigan in nineteen ninety-nine. My wife was in her last year at Lawrence Tech, so her dreams, her schedule was a stronger magnet than mine, so it brought me here. And actually, I've been living in Troy for almost five years now. We have four kids. I've been working for the road commission for Oakland County for the past fourteen years in various capacities, and most recently for the past eight or nine years as a traffic engineer for the traffic engineering department.
Very good. Thank you. Ms. Cruz?
Well, I'd like to welcome both our new members, and thank you for relieving me of the new girl title. I'm excited about the project, this Mark of Troy, and I've said it before, but I'll risk repeating myself, and we need more developers like Mr. Schaefer to come in here and be flexible and listen and work with us and create great new spaces in our city to move forward.
Mr. Krent?
Again, welcome Padma and Ali to our commission. I appreciate your depth of knowledge about various things in the city. I've listened to some of the things you've done over the years. You have a great community heart at mind. I love the volunteer work you have done, because I've, you know, seen it and recognized it, and I'm sure you'll do a fabulous job with us here on the commission.
Tom Stratt and Don Edmonds and Tom Krent joined with me for the Fifteen for Fifteen event about ten days ago, I think it was, and I was very pleasantly surprised. It was a nice presentation, a nice cross-section of the businesses. They were appreciative, and I think it reflects very good on the city that we're starting to highlight some of the local businesses in connection with the planning department, and kudos. Nice job, Brent.
Very good, Brent.
I want to state, sorry, I played a very, very, very minor role in the Fifteen for Fifteen. To give me credit, it would be, a lot of people did a lot of hard work on Fifteen for Fifteen, a lot more than me, but I will thank them on behalf of you, Mr. Hudson.
Mr. Stratt?
Yeah, I want to welcome our new members as well. I know Mr. Zanzika's comments several times about this, and I think I'd like to bring it up. He recommended that maybe all the commissioners submit a bio on themselves, so everybody knows, especially the new ones, know what our backgrounds are, et cetera. So I thought that was an excellent idea, but I would strongly recommend that we submit bios to the planning department and see if they can distribute it so that everybody knows what everybody's strengths are.
That's a really good idea. There are several bios already on the planning site.
Oh, really?
Yes. There are several people that are on there, I know, so.
Oh.
But I agree, if you haven't submitted one, it would be, this would be an opportunity.
I will do so, but I know that they're submitted to the city for approval, reapproval, I think, but I didn't know that you, the planning department, had copies of those to be submitted to the rest of us.
Well, they're actually on the planning department site.
There.
Yes.
Are you sure, Mr. Chairman?
Resources, yes.
Okay. I'll take your word for it.
I looked at some the other day.
I will submit, and I'd recommend everybody else to submit if they haven't, because I think that would be excellent.
Most, in the case of new members, it's really easy because, for them, because they can just submit whatever they submitted to the clerk and just edit it and whatever, and they'll, it'll get published on there.
I don't know what they submitted, so I would...
Mr. Matzlin?
Very good. Yes, the city attorney report on the oil and gas extraction ordinance should be done by the first meeting in March. There is a seminar on February twenty-six on oil and gas extractions that both myself and the city attorney are attending, and we're hopeful that after that, we might have some new ideas or thoughts with regard to the ordinance. And I will not be at the next meeting, the February meeting, but probably Julie DeFrane from our office will cover it, so.
Thank you. Mr. Savida?
Yeah, I'm really excited about the two new additions, Padma and Ali. I am really excited about the Planning Commission. I think we've got a very sophisticated planning commission. I'm looking forward to 2015. So the two new additions are great news. This great project is great news, so it's been a pretty good night. There's, today I can tell you, and I haven't even had really a chance to look at the applications, but we had two applications for site condominiums, new site condominium projects. Again, literally received them today. I think fifty units, Ben, total? A twenty-five and a twenty-six unit, I believe, or twenty-five and twenty-five, so fifty new units. So the residential, the resident, detached single-family home residential housing market in Troy is doing fabulously. I think that's about it for the projects that are pending in the short term. Stay tuned for other ones. We, there's been some... We, there's been some tire kicking, but there's nothing I can, I can really talk about until we get an application, but I think 2015's going to, going to be a good year.
Mr. Carlisle?
Just want to welcome the two members. We met with them earlier. It was a pleasure meeting with you, and look forward to working with you in the future.
Thank you. We all received a, I think just today or yesterday, the March planners gathering meeting that's going to be held in Pontiac, and the site venue for the, for the luncheon is actually a work-live-loft facility that was placed in the old, if any of you remember, I'm sure a lot of you do, the old Sears Building in downtown Pontiac. And I think if there's money in the budget, it might be good. I certainly would like to attend. It's, I'd like to find out from some of these developers what they did to actually incentivize those developers to put work-live type of lofts, type situations, so I think we, we need that. And the only other second item I have, I get comments all the time from the Planning Commission members that this is not a good venue for us to meet when we don't have anything controversial. I, I don't see why we can't have all of our meetings in the council boardrooms unless there's some conflict. I think this is not a, a venue that's conducive to free exchange back and forth like you have in the boardroom. All of our meetings are actually regular meetings now. They aren't, they aren't special study meetings or things like that. We, we proved all that in our bylaw update, so I would just ask staff that you look into that and see why we could not do it. I understand when that room is being used, you know, for voting type things or that type, for the clerk's office, but I think it would be much better. It's, it's much easier. When people have, applicants have visuals, it's really difficult for the people on that side of the room to see them if they're on this side, so it's, and it's a much freer exchange of information, and I, I would certainly prefer that. That's all I have.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I don't necessarily disagree. I think, I think there's a lot of merit in that. I don't believe that it's any more difficult to record a meeting from that, from the council boardroom than it is here, so I, I think, short of tradition, I, I'll confirm with, with, with management, but I don't believe there's anything that would prohibit us from doing that, so let me get back to you on that. I think that's a really good suggestion.
If we have a public hearing and, you know, and it's a very controversial thing, I don't, I don't have any problem with meeting in here. If there are no further comments, then we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.